Today is Wednesday, March 17th. It is now 5:17 PM. And this is the committee as a whole meeting scheduled to discuss Resolution Number Two, The clerk could please read it by title?
A resolution of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana approving a form of lease and taking other actions regarding their proposed lease.
Thank you, Ken. All right. So there was a list of questions that were sent to the administration that have been responded to, which will certainly serve as a basis for some of our discussion today. But I'm sure that there will be potentially other questions as well. But I do just want to make a couple of comments. And this is more for making sure that we're all on sort of common ground as we move forward on these types of public work projects. A, I just want to say that, you know, we've sort of had this conversation as council members amongst ourselves, and we certainly have had conversations with the administration regarding the importance of making sure that the council is pulled in earlier on in the process when we talk about doing these major public works projects. You know, certainly, we know that these types of projects have a long life cycle. So the planning doesn't happen in a couple of months. It happens typically in a year or more. So that, you know, a conversation regarding this fire station happened in a formal manner with the full council in December. And now here we are. A lot of these questions, I feel, could have been addressed and the concerns could have been addressed, you know, a year ago, or certainly between the time that it was announced at the state of the city this time last year, sometime between then and December. I just want to make sure that as we go forward and we start looking at doing these types of projects, that we don't set a precedence of rushing these things through. These are big decisions. We have lots of questions from our constituents. And quite honestly, we want to feel good that we are informed and that we're making an informed vote when you talk about something in the tune of almost $10 million that our city will be paying for for decades. So I want to make sure that, you know, if there's any other large public works projects that are already in full swing, that I really would like to say that those need to be in front of the council at the earliest opportunity, certainly before any RFQ or RFP processes has been undergone. And I don't think that's unreasonable. And I would just like to go on the record as saying that that would be our expectation as a council going forward. We cannot be put in the position to be making decisions in two or three months that everyone else had information and opportunity to provide input into over a year. So enough on that. Let's move forward with, I'm going to open it up to the council for any questions that you have. And then I'm sure the administration will bring forward whoever is going to address the question. Go right ahead.
Madam President, I didn't know. Is that all right? I'll just lead off with just a quick question because you addressed it slightly there in your opening statement. I was curious when the actual RFQ process began. A lot of us, you know, about half the council has been on the council for approximately a year. So I was curious when the RFQ process opened, who was invited to that, who participated, and when would the decision was made to go with the contractor and the architect that you ultimately selected?
Is Controller Fenwick or someone there that can ask, answer the questions about the RFQ timing and involvement?
I don't have the exact date on me, but it was early last year. I want to say it was in the May timeframe that the RFQ went out. We did not solicit any responses. We just posted the RFQ. We did receive three responses. One was from Garmong, one was from Bowen, and the third was from Meyer Najem. So that was the timeframe of the RFQ for the CMC.
Did that answer all your questions regarding that? Counselor Denny?
Yes, it did. And so at that, I think this just kind of goes a little bit more to your point, Madam President. You know, May of 2020 was close to a year ago, like you were saying, and it was just brought forward in March. Going forward, I'd love to participate in that. If you could just give us some updates or let us know as those items occur.
Any other counsel?
Somebody released the hounds.
Yeah. Yeah. Somebody needs to go on mute, please. Fido is not happy. Someone, please go on mute.
Madam Chair, I have a question. It's not so much a question, but I'd like to get some further discussion on question 17.
So question 17. What is the construction cost per square foot? When was this evaluated last? And what are we basing the figures off of? Okay.
So I did look at the chart, and I mean, I read the chart. But I'm interested in it in the sense of, it kind of, to me, links back to the question of, do we go to the design of a first story, to second story, to how did that all implement to give us this cost to square foot? I just was curious to just hear some discussion on it.
You know, unfortunately, Garmong was not able to make this call tonight. They had a conflict. I don't know, do you know if you have any clarification on at least first floor versus second floor?
Is that really your question, Tyrell? First floor versus second floor, or is it around the cost?
It's around the cost first, and then asking, did the design, when you compare these other buildings, the first question is about the cost, and then is how it related to the design back to the cost.
Okay. Because I received those questions from a couple of counselors, and I reached out to Structure Point in writing, and they responded back. And the two counselors that asked that question, given where this is taking place, it was at least less expensive to go with a one-story than it was a two, based on where this is. And some of the committee members, when they went to these other firehouses, Wayne, for example, is a fairly new firehouse. They had to redo it. Some of those firefighters were saying they wish they would went to a one-story. As much as possible, you're trying to keep the living quarters on the same level as where the engine bays are, because we do everything we can to try to capture those exhaust fumes. But sometimes it's not entirely possible to catch them all. So you don't want those seeping up into the sleeping quarters or where the living quarters are. And they were asking about response time. It doesn't change response time a whole lot, but if you're on the same floor, it just, it makes sense that you're on the same floor. It's easier to get to the apparatus versus coming down a pole, which there again, now you've got more injuries involved with that, or coming down the stairs. It does take a little bit longer, especially if it's the middle of the night. So to answer from both ends, it is, in this situation, it is cheaper to go with a, I don't want to use the word cheaper, but it's less expensable with a one-story versus a two. And then some of those other questions relate to the response time and why we chose to go with the one-story versus a two. It's just safer, just in case those fumes do get out. There's different systems that capture those exhaust fumes, but like the one we have currently, the hoses aren't connected until the truck's back in. So they're running as they're backing in. And for instance, we had a two-story. Now, those fumes would seep through and get up to the second floor of the living quarters.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a few questions, but they kind of jump around. Is it all right if I?
That's fine.
So one, to begin with, I wanted to thank, and I should have acknowledged this to begin with, Chief Patalas and Local 416 for opening the doors to the stations and letting the counselors who had requested a tour come in and see the station. So I personally was able to go see 38 and Torres. So thank you again for taking the time out of your day to do that. So Chief Patalas, I think I'll start with one of my questions first, and this just came up during the tour. One of the options, and I'm going by memory here from the December presentation, which I don't have in front of me, was there are some newer, modern firehouse doors that are out there which fold to the side and don't require electricity to open. In case of emergency power outage, the generator does a kick in. You can utilize these folding doors to open and get the engine out. There has been an emergency in Lawrence where that would have been critical, having those doors on the station. Should those doors be included as part of this redevelopment plan, and why weren't they there?
Okay. So to base, to go back to that emergency you're referring to, it was a severe storm, and we had just taken over. And I'm not trying to look in the rearview mirror or blame anything or throw it underneath the bus. But most of the stations did not have generators, or if they had them, they were not operating correctly. So one of the issues we have is that generator did not operate to open those doors when the electricity failed. Since then, all five stations either have refurbished generators or brand-new ones. So all five stations that we have all have a generator. This new station would also have a generator. I, for one, along with the committee, realize that those according doors should not be used because the cost of those doors were $46,000. And not only the onset cost, you could almost put every door, overhead door in that firehouse for what the cost of those doors would be. And if they break and they require maintenance, they're much more expensive to keep up. So I wasn't only looking at the initial cost, you have to look down the road and find out what your upkeep's going to be and costs down the road. So even though they look nice, that is money that could be better spent somewhere else in that firehouse. And the committee agreed, along with myself, that that was just way too much of an investment. You're not getting your bang for the buck just because they look nice. We have to go beyond that. We have to look at the operational use of that. And so those doors can be manually opened, but we, the station will be, have a brand-new generator. That's incorporated in those costs.
Okay. Thank you. That was one piece that came up, and it was just on my mind. I wanted to make sure it was addressed and put in the public record as well, that we talked about that. And you mentioned in one of the responses that one of the issues you have currently with 38 is it has a basement, but this new station will be on a slab. Is that correct?
That's correct. There is a water issue with that being in the basement. It's always wet, and that's one of the reasons that we chose this floor plan and not to go with the basement in this new firehouse.
Do you, where would the water drain out to? If you go to a slab, is there water issues underneath the slab in the basement? Is there going to be a problem with the building sinking?
We've addressed that with the design, and I know Scott's on here from Structure Point. Maybe Scott, you'd be better equipped to answer that question? Scott?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah. Did you hear the question about the water that's an issue in that basement now versus, with the new station being on a slab? What was taken in consideration to mitigate that?
We did geotech reports to review the soil conditions, and we're going to have to do some different type, it's not your standard type of footing we'll have to do in that general area because of the soil conditions being a little softer than typical. So we'll have to do more of a geopair type condition to make sure we have good, stable footings.
Okay. Does that add to the cost, or is that already built in to the cost that you proposed?
That's already built into the cost that Garmong estimated.
Okay. Thank you. And I have just a couple more questions then, and maybe it might be, Controller Fenwick might be in a better spot for these. So I know in the last few months, even the last few weeks, we've watched our 401Ks and CNBC pretty tightly. Is there any big change on these interest rates or things going on that would affect this project? Or do you foresee anything in the next 60 days that would affect this project?
Well, if I could accurately answer that, I think I might hop a flight to Vegas and, you know, make some money that way. But generally speaking, I think, yeah, I did, in the questions and answers, I did put a chart of the 10-year U.S. Treasury rate going back to 1962. And so the all-time high rate for that was 15.84% in 1981. And pretty much since then, rates have been on a over-30-year decline, to the point where we hit the all-time low in August of last year of 0.52%. So since then, rates have gone up about 100 basis points. So we're around 1 and 1/2, give or take, depending on the day. So it appears that, you know, rates are climbing a little bit, but from a historical perspective, we are still at all-time lows. And we factored in an assumption on the interest cost for this that I believe is conservative, then probably gives us at least 200 basis points of flexibility. So I would say in the near term, while there is some risk of it going higher, I don't think it would, well, I don't want to say it couldn't, but it shouldn't go high enough to where it blows through our, what we assumed on a conservative basis for this.
Okay. And then the last question, Madam President, and then I'll end my series here. So as you're, this is pretty major construction. You're going to take up a good chunk of the corner there, just equipment, heavy equipment coming in and out. Will there be additional cost in road repair, sidewalk repair, or anything else on the corner there where you're, where we're building the station?
They just did road work on 45th Street and McCoy Street, and we've had that same equipment there since that station's been built. So I don't know if there would be anything additional other than the regular wear and tear that there's been over the last 35 years. And I'm not trying to be a smart aleck about, but there's no new equipment going in there that would be heavier than what that's been there for the last 35 years. So one thing.
I think I missed another spoke, Chief Patalas. I didn't mean your fire equipment. I meant the construction equipment. Is the construction process going to damage the street at all, and is that a concern we should have as this begins?
I couldn't answer that. I don't, I don't know.
All right. Thank you. That's legit.
Thank you, Counselor Denny. Yeah, I'm going to get right to you. Chief, is there a way we can see the rendering of what this fire station is going to look like?
Okay. So in December, there was a, I don't know if you can see this or not, but I'll be more than happy to get this to everyone. This was in that slide presentation we did in December.
Yeah. At that time, it was like you were looking to do something like that. So are you saying that the final building is going to look exactly like that?
For the most part. There might be a little bit of a color difference, but the building itself will, should look like that. And Scott, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this was like the final, I know there's not actually plans yet, but this was, should be the outside of the building. Is that correct?
Correct. That's the overall appearance. We agreed on color adjustments and stuff will be made and selected as we look at manufacturers and what ranges they can all perform so that we can get multiple bidders for each product.
But pretty much, that's the building. That's the fire station.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Who's that, Counselor Giles?
Yeah. I have a couple of questions for the chief. You kind of sparked my interest with one of the answers that said that the station was one of the busiest stations in Marion County. I wasn't aware of any ranking of the firehouses. So what is our ranking as far as busyness or, you know, production?
Okay. There is a publication called The Helmet that goes out to every firefighter in Marion County, and they do stats on every firehouse, every ambulance, every tactical truck, ladder engine. Ladder 38 that's housed in that, on the McCoy Street, is the busiest ladder in the entire Marion County. And that's, compared to Indianapolis's ladders, it is the busiest one in the entire county.
Okay. Now, the answer, I'm asking, this is, I'm totally ignorant, you know, and I'm actually almost embarrassed to ask this question, but I don't want to make an assumption. What are the duties of a ladder?
Okay.
That makes it, you know?
Okay. That ladder serves as like search and rescue, and they do ventilation. Sometimes they're on car accidents. And we, the reason, one of the reasons that that station is in a good location, it's got easy access to Pendleton Pike going east and west, and also to the interstate. Because would they get many runs where those vehicles are called, are either tactical truck or ladder, on accidents that have entrapment where people are trapped inside the car? So besides the ambulance go, they'll get, they'll get like the battalion vehicle, they'll get a ladder. But the primary functions of that, we call the ladder, or they call the truck, or an aerial, it's the primary, it's for search and rescue and ventilation is with their primary duties.
Okay. Now, here's the next question. You led right into it. And unfortunately, I feel like I'm a day late and a dollar short with this question. And this is the reason why we need to be included in the process earlier, but I got to ask it. When I went over to investigate and look at the station, the thing that popped in my mind, as someone that would like to see the area look better, is why not buy that abandoned car wash that sits right on the quarter, all on Pendleton Pike, and put a beautiful station, all Pendleton Pike? Because really, McCoy Street is kind of jammed and tied and kind of, I don't, I think that sitting off Pendleton Pike running east and west sure would probably seem better, but I'm a day late and dollar short for that suggestion at this point.
Well, there's, it could go there. However, then you're talking about increased costs, because the land, the land that's, well, I'm just giving you an answer to that. The land that we're on there and behind it, the city owns that land.
We actually did discuss that car wash for 38, and we determined, one, the purchase price was too high for what that property was. And second of all, our intent was to, we would rather see that in privately developed hands, because if we buy it, there's no taxes being generated. And as we're trying to further build out Pendleton Pike and pursue economic development, we felt that it would have a higher value in private hands than being a non-taxpaying property.
Well, and that is a very reasonable and considerable for we. I assume "we" is administration, because I don't know who the others would be involved in that. And that's understandable. But some, it would also be considerable to say that in an area that is in need of redevelopment, sometimes public projects is just the economic spark that is needed to bring some look into that area, as many of my constituents complain about the car lots and the look of it, that this could have been an opportunity to have community input. Because sometimes a couple extra dollars, or maybe even doing this project slower in a bond way, which would be a little cheaper, maybe could have done that. But, and I'm sorry that this, I have to say this now because I wasn't given that opportunity, but we may have missed an opportunity to change the scope and the landscape of our city and as people drive through, to show how we're making progress in beautifying this lovely city of ours. That's all I have.
If I could slightly disagree on that point, because I think there will be involvement and has been on the current design that's being done by Synthesis, which will encompass that area. Basically, it's the trades district from 465 and Pendleton Pike all the way down to this area. And there is a big plan for that redevelopment. So to your point, Councilman Giles, there is going to be, hopefully, over the next five to six months, a schematic in what this can be so that we can all then start to work, to your point, to changing the corridor as you come into Lawrence from that area.
Okay. Counselor Freeman, then Counselor Rusomura.
Chief, will this include a beacon light for the fire trucks to come out from McCoy onto Pendleton Pike into the flow of traffic?
That has to do with the state. So a couple of times during my tenure here on the department, the state of Indiana has wanted to put a median right across Pendleton Pike, which block our access going east on Pendleton Pike, which would cause our trucks to have to go down to 45th Street and out Mallory. And so even if it was on, the station was on Pendleton Pike or whatever, they were still going to be a barrier. So we have fought that twice, and the state has agreed with us. Right now, there's no light there. There's a sign for no left turn for regular traffic, but there, right now, there is no beacon there. Some of the intersections are set up for that to happen, but right now, where that truck would come out on McCoy Street, there is not. And like I said, I think we're ready for the number of runs we go east from that location. I think we would have a pretty good fight with the state. And like I said, we've won that battle twice now, that they want to put a solid median through there. They weren't even going to put a cut through. They were going to make a solid median through there, which is, it's a state highway.
Thank you. Counselor Rusomura?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to also thank all the persons, Mr. Fenwick, Chief Patalas, and all the others involved with the questions and answers. I appreciate that, and I also appreciate them making time for me to take a tour of Station 38. Counselor Freeman kind of took a little bit of my steam there, because that was exactly the question I was going to ask. But what I was thinking when we were doing our tour was about the stoplight that is at the Wendy's just eastward a bit, at the Wendy's and the shopping center. I was wondering, why couldn't we move that, given that we may not have as much traffic there, to the McCoy Street? And that way allow you, and we kind of also got into the conversation about how the fire equipment no longer has, and I'm not going to remember the name of the device that allows you to change the signal so that you can have a left.
The optagon. Optcon.
Yeah. Thank you.
There's a device on our, on the top of the apparatus that does change the light. And what you bring up is a good point, Counselor, but I don't think that's something the city could actually do on their own. That would have to be a state to move that, because it is a state highway. And I will tell you, that intersection, because I was based out of that station before getting this position, and I've been there, that is not a real heavy intersection like some of the other ones, like Franklin Road and Pendleton Pike. There's not a whole lot of traffic. I'm not saying there's none, but it's a lot less traffic there than there is like at Post and Pendleton Pike and Franklin and Pendleton Pike. So usually the guys can, the ladies and gentlemen can usually maneuver through that intersection a lot easier than some of the others in the city. So that hasn't caused a huge problem for us with that intersection itself. And I'm not saying, and I'm not saying that we couldn't probably get in conjunction with the state to put up maybe, when the trucks go out on a run or ambulance, there might not be like a flashing light east and west, you know, like, I know some of the places have in Indianapolis where if emergency vehicles are coming out, it would at least warn them or stop them on the Pike, not being a traffic light, but actually a, like a warning device.
Right. I was just concerned about left-hand turns going eastward. And I guess they're dealing with it because we still have really great response times. But that was something that came to my mind, and I didn't know if this was quite the form, but I wanted to throw it out there anyway. And my other question or comment, and that I'm a bit concerned about with the planning and so forth of the building, was I, given the meeting about with the planning and so forth of the building, was I, given the meeting that I've participated in for the new library and how many sustainable initiatives and environmental initiatives that they have with that development, I didn't see hardly any of that with this new fire station. And I know we're comparing apples and oranges and you've got a lot of regulatory requirements you have to meet and so forth. But I just wanted to make sure that we are reviewing all capacity for any sustainability and environmental initiatives that we can have that might include things that could reduce our electric bills via solar and things like that thinking. And I know it's, you know, 20 years ago, it wasn't quite viable, but today it really is. And I just don't want us to close our mind off to those potentials if we can kind of review it, if we have any opportunity for that. I just want to be sure that we kind of take a look. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor. And we have, we have taken that into effect, like being green with the lights. In fact, the current firehouses that have been kind of remodeled a little bit have that where the lights come on when you walk through. They've got the motion sensors like in the bays and so forth. So we have, we have taken that in consideration.
I think Counselor Rusomora would be interested in us when we move forward and if there's still opportunity in this project, the future projects, to take that a couple steps further. That is certainly a start in the right direction. But certainly as we're building these new facilities, I think it's incumbent upon us to look at those options because it's almost like you need to do it. If you have the opportunity to do it now, you're going to be able to maximize the savings and the environmental impacts that could exist. So thank you for that. I think that's very important as we move forward. Any other counselors? I do want to make sure that two things that have been brought to my attention from my peers as well as some constituents. You know, there's some concern and I'm hoping that someone from the administration can put us at ease about this. What is the plan to support all of the building that we're doing on the fort? From the apartments, the additional apartments that are going in there, the additional homes that are going in there, the libraries going in there, businesses are going in there. It's exciting. We have a lot of growth. And also just south of, you know, in the Windy Ridge area, right? There's a lot of growth there as well. What is our plan to ensure that we can support those? Are we going to hire any additional firefighters? Is there a need for an additional engine? I mean, you know, as we, I mean, literally, that's like a little miniature city that's getting built right there. How are we going to support that?
Okay, so right now, the, we did a study in all the zip codes, zip codes even, even right outside of Lawrence. And the 46216 area, which is the fort itself, has got the smallest percentage of any other area in Lawrence. Fire runs and EMS runs. And that question-
You're saying based on the current situation, right?
That's correct. But I think that we're okay now and in the future because our response times into the fort are well, well below the national average. Or when ISO came in and did our ratings, we are well, well below what the standard time is to respond into the fort from those outline stations on a fire run. So I don't, I'm not, I'm not only saying that we can take care of what's going on now, but we've looked into the future for this also. And Counselor Denny had asked me the question is, you know, are we building this firehouse and any future ones with the growth in mind? And we have to add, if we have to add personnel or equipment, we're keeping that in mind when we're doing these new stations. So we are taking all that into account, Counselor.
So is the answer to the question that you do not think that five years from now, when, it's not even going to be five years, right? A couple of years from now, when all that is built out, including what we have going on in the Windy Ridge area, that you believe that we have everything that we need to sustain that growth?
I think that, I think what something should be on the burner is to, as our population increases, obviously, public safety is very important. And to say that we can stay stagnant with the police and fire, I don't think I can sit here and say that. I'm thinking now and into the near future, we can. There is an opportunity to put a fire engine back at Station 40. You know, there's going to be some, that station was built 20 years ago also, but with some modifications. So we have the opportunity, we have addressed that with our command staff. And I'm sure Chief Hoffman would agree too, that, you know, for either chief to stand here and say that we can be stagnant with the future growth of this city, no, we have to look at future growth with more police officers and more firefighters. And like I said, so I'm not trying to convey the message that we want to stay stagnant by any means.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
Madam President, just to follow up Chief Patalis to that, if the design that you lifted up and showed us for the new Station 38, would there be enough base space if you had to add another tactical truck or another engine there?
Yes, sir.
To that specific location?
Yes, sir. We built the station to add personnel and also if we have to put another, like an engine in there with the ladder, that we can also accommodate that with this new station. So, and I know you and I talked early on, and that was one of your main questions, are we building this for the future with the Trades District and all that? So we've had all that in mind. And I'm glad you brought up because it is important to look down the road because these stations aren't just like a three or four-year usage. It's, it goes way beyond that.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Rusomora?
Yes, I just wanted to make one point that may be relevant here. Sometimes with redevelopment in particular, because of the regulations, the building codes, et cetera, et cetera, the tendency for fires and other hazards aren't always there with the new populations of development. I think there's a decreasing return on that piece. Although, of course, we have to also look at the demographics of the persons that are going to be living there. And you might have a higher incident rate of casualties or anything else due to older populations. So sometimes there's a cost benefit differential between a fire truck and a fire situation versus maybe an ambulance situation. So that may be a part of that equation that they're taking into account. I just wanted to throw that out there for thought.
Thank you. I think I have a follow-up question that I had written down for the controller that I just want to ask really quick. You said in the RFQ process that we had three responses. Was Garmong the lowest out of those three?
Honestly, I don't have those notes in front of me. I'll have to, I want to go back and look at those, seeing how it was from last year. So if I could defer answering that until I can look at those notes, I'll get that answer to you.
Yeah, okay. And a follow-up to that. If they weren't, so this, you can get this answer back to me when you look. I don't want to put you on the spot so you can get it back to me. If they weren't, did we negotiate the, down whatever we accepted as the, you know, the final or agreed to amount? So if you can just get, get me those answers at some later time, that'd be appreciated. Thank you. The other part that I know Counselor Giles has been working on, and it's very important to, I would say, the majority of the council members, is our minority participation in this project. And so we are anxiously waiting Garmong's strategic plan on how we're going to increase minority participation in this project. That is extremely important to the majority of this council. And we would like to get that sooner rather than later because we really, none of us are really interested in installing this anymore than we need to. And I'm using that word extremely lightly. I would say that the majority of the questions have been answered. I will reach out to those on the council to see, sort of take a pulse on where everyone is. But I think this is a good start and it's great dialogue. And, you know, we would be looking to have this dialogue earlier. And I'm going to keep saying that until we get where we're supposed to be. And I'd say that's a major ask that we are still waiting on. Is what the strategic plan is to make sure that we have increased minority participation in this project. How we're going to do it, what we're going to do, what they're going to do. So if you can press Garmong on that to get that back to us as soon as possible, I really appreciate it.
Will do.
What other questions do we have? Okay. Well, seeing no more questions, I am going to move for adjournment. We are adjourned. See you all at 6:30.